Yes, Mike Clifford, 489.
Can't hear you, Mike.
Paul, it's on. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, but we couldn't hear you for a minute.
It was on. I didn't mute myself or anything, and my audio tested fine in the beginning, so I don't know what the problem is. But you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to speak to the actions that you've delegated to the MBRTF with regard to the Bushy Building. I'm gonna share with you some numbers and point out that I think at this point to hire yet another architect after we've already spent $458,331 on architects and studies, that we're now going back and not using any of the material that they provided to us, but we seem to be moving forward with the desire to hire another architect or consultant. You've had two architects develop plans for that Bushy to be converted into a police facility. You've had study upon study made. Some of you have signed off on all of these expenditures and what are the contracts with all of these different companies. And now we're at the point where we're yet again going to engage another outside person to come up with some numbers for us. I'd like to point out that you have, as I told you, I think I did a presentation several months ago in January, and I shared with you at the time that you have 16 division breakdowns. Here they are right here. I gave you a copy of them that evening, of course, by category of construction from four different bidders in 2016. So you can look at the numbers for each division, like doors and windows, finishes, specialties, masonry, and come up with the cost. I think it's foolish that we're gonna spend money to start with someone else again and come up with numbers. You also have the numbers from Mr. Sikosha when he issued his bids in 2018. Although he denied having the 16 division breakdown at the meeting in January with the town council, I told you I have a recording of that, of his conversation with the MBRTF committee telling them he had the 16 division breakdown, but the bidders didn't want it to be public. So because you're choosing not to request that information from the person who we contracted for, who was supposedly working for the town, and Paul, you were at that meeting that I recorded that evening when you were told, along with all the other members, that he had the breakdown of costs. And yet, we don't seem to be insisting on getting those breakdowns of costs. So you could have his 16 division breakdown of costs. You could use the 2016 division breakdown of costs. And you don't need to start from square one to come up with, you know, what's it gonna cost us in today's dollar? If you go to any cost estimator working for any of these contractors, they're gonna tell you what the rate of inflation has been for construction over the last several years, and you can just factor that in. This is not a monumental task, and it's something that simply the MBRTF could do on their own with the assistance of, you know, polling for information from different people in the field that they allegedly know what's the cost of inflation been over the last several years for construction. I think it's absolutely ludicrous that we're gonna spend another penny on this nonsense. And it leads me to wonder, you know, if we have all this data in front of us that people refer to, and we're choosing not to use it, is it because we're shopping for another architect who will give us the opinion that we're shopping for? I really resent seeing squandered taxpayer dollars. I really do. And I think this is the biggest squanderer of all. And some of you, including Mr. Zelinski, have voted on every single one of these contracts back through 2013. And Paul wasn't at the meeting initially when I spoke last month, but I was asking, he led the charge in 2016 to delay the outgoing council's decision to move forward. He wanted to defer it to the new council, and he wasn't on line of participating in the meeting to hear me remind him of that. But I'm gonna remind him of that again. Also, I think, you know, if there's something in this, in the bid specs, or in that Mr. Ami from Studio Major came up with that is inadequate, I'd like the MBRTF to hold a public meeting, not a private closed-door meeting as you've done in the past, but a public meeting with the chief of police, because he was on the initial committee, along with the former chief, that approved the plans and told Eric Ami, Studio Major, and the former PBIC what they wanted in the building. So if they want something more than what's in that building, I'd like to know what it is and what's the justification for adding it at this point, okay, when neither of them had a problem with it in 2016. And I heard Mr. Verigad made reference, he's a member of the MBRTF, that, you know, Sallyport was a major issue, and he, on the Zoom meeting that was held the last time, he was sending out a message that a Sallyport would cost more than the renovation of the whole building. That's absolutely insane. He was on the MBRTF. Mr. Sikosha did come up with a cost for the Sallyport, and it was like something like $75,000. There's all different ranges of Sallyport. So yes, it can be done. Yes, it can be added. No, it's not gonna cost more than the total renovation. Let's start being honest about this and being factual in presentations instead of, you know, these half-truths that are coming out all the time. If there's any questions about what I've said, or anybody wants to refute what I've said at this point, I'd like you to do it now, because it's very frustrating to watch later in the meeting when statements are made that are actually incorrect, rebutting what I said in my presentation. So if you have an issue with it, a question with it, ask it now. Anybody?
Yeah, my hand up.
Mr. Chairman.
All due respect, Paul, Mr. Zelinski, Councilman Zelinski.
Yeah.
The open forum, where the public has a right to address the council. We're not here to rebut.
Paul, please don't lecture me. I understand that.
It's an agenda item in the meeting, Paul. If you want to address it at that time, we can address it at that time.
He has the right to address it now if he'd like to. Where's Mr. Igliosi? Why don't you ask him that question? See, Paul, you liked the dog and pony presentation afterwards, where I can't stand up and say, wait a minute, that's not accurate. Or wait a minute, you're making up facts here. So I have another question. If you're not gonna allow him to answer my questions now, I'll ask my second question and raise my second point.
Well, go ahead and ask your second question, but make it brief, because there's somebody else that motioned that they'd like to speak in the open forum, and you've already used nine minutes of it.
Yeah, but you've had two contracts with Mr. Sikosha, and they totaled $129,950. You did one for $48,300 for the space study, and then you signed a second contract with him for $81,650. And I believe the language in that contract said not to exceed $81,650. You're now up to, you paid him year-to-date according to that document that was handed out at the last meeting by the finance director. It shows $183,305 paid to him total. So on this current contract, he's gotta be over by about $53,000. And I'd like to know legally, how did you have the right to extend that contract beyond the terms without going out for competitive bid for services? And secondly, I'll bring up my point of, I don't even think, quite honestly, if Mr. Sikosha is participating in the dispute that you might have with the contractor, that it's appropriate for him to be doing that. He threw up the bid specs. He drew up the bid manual. He oversaw the project. And if there's a dispute with the contractor, that apparently there is, you've had 17 MBRTF meetings from July to July, and well, but two or three had executive sessions that lasted an incredible amount of time. So apparently, there's some litigation. Why would he be acting on the town's behalf when it's a possibility that some issue that was created for the contractor resulted from his bid specs and his plans? Why is he mediating the settlement? I mean, if I were he, I would say, oh, no, it's the contractor's fault to protect myself. So I don't even understand why you'd have him as the representative of the town in this case if he's involved in that litigation. And I think he must be, because he's been out of the Zoom meetings when you've been in closed session. So, you know, I questioned why you, how you had the legal right to extend that contract beyond the amount that you did without taking another vote. And secondly, I questioned his participation in trying to settle any dispute with the contractor. And I would hope, I've never seen it on the closed session, executive session, for the council to discuss this pending litigation. But I would hope that you, if you haven't, that you put it on the agenda and start talking about it, because we've also paid the attorney $24,000 year-to-date. So, you know, what is it that you've authorized all this money to be spent for? And it's looking to me, like, based on the payments made to the contractor year-to-date, that he's gonna get the full amount that is coming to him out of this. So what were we litigating all this time? And I also take issue with the fact that Mr. Sikosha has made false statements before the council on several occasions, and I've refuted those at the next meeting, because I wasn't able to do it on the spot. And I provided you with documentation, and yet nobody ever flinches. Everybody seems content. So that's the issues that I have and the questions and the concerns that I wanted to raise. And again, if there's questions, I really would appreciate it if you'd ask them now, instead of, you know, having me silenced while you debate it, contradict everything I say, without my ability to set the record straight until the next meeting.
All finished?
I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Mr. Izowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaker, as a resident, but of course with the knowledge of being the town administrator. A resident is engaging in his normal Facebook effort to manage what I call a little political party, and misleading people by declaring that waiting to issue tax bills was for no reason other than to provide opportunity to raise the tax rate. I wanna make sure this council and anyone listening is aware that was not the case. The delay in setting the tax roll was an effort... Is there something you need to say, Mr. Clifford?
And I'd encourage people to watch the audio tape of the meeting, so they can hear what the discussion was about.
I have the floor, Mr. Clifford.
Mr. Clifford.
Can he be muted, please?
Please. Nobody interrupted you. Go ahead, Mr. Izowski.
Should I start again? "I wanna make sure this council and anyone listening is aware that was not the case. The delay in setting the tax roll was an effort to be certain that our budget and our bills were each based upon a full set of facts, which we did not have on June 30th, and unfortunately, we still don't have today. As a small business person, my budget supported specific action plans, which of course I could change on my own. In this scenario, I'm not alone in setting action plans. In fact, it is this council that ultimately decides what actions we want to take in when setting a budget. If there is good news or bad news in the final issuance of a state budget, I believe we should set those action plans together before bills and before any department started using substantial portions of budgeted funds. If the news was particularly bad, some specific measures in personnel could be set, could be set right from the start across all town departments with a basis that was clear and defensible. If the news was more moderate or even good, other considerations were possible. Some of those options will still be available to us when the state finally enacts a budget to define our plight, but some will be gone." It has also been suggested that our fund balance should be just tapped in the event the news is bad, and that is an option. But let's keep in mind that we set a fund balance policy to follow recommendations from the Government Finance Officers Association to ensure that our balance sheet remained attractive to bonding entities if or when voters decided on need to borrow. That fund balance also provides us with the kind of flexibility that we have today. We could delay issuance of tax bills because we were equipped to deal with unexpected circumstances. Other towns may have been forced to issue bills without all the facts in hand, because they don't have the resources to deal with the unexpected. We could, and we have. Our fund balance has done exactly what it should do, give us time. I will say clearly now that in my view, suggestions being made that we should immediately dip into those funds for whatever comes our way in this budget cycle are not wise to follow. It's taken time to build our reserve to a respectable, yet not gilded, position. Using substantial amounts of those funds would be the same as selling some of our snowplows, because it doesn't snow this time of year. In my opinion, people who default to drastic reduction in reserves are not the long-range decision-makers we need managing town business. It's easy to understand that for some, this billing delay has been an inconvenience. It is, however, not this council or administration for which people should hold disappointment. It is our federal officials who have most recently chose to be on vacation right now before making a decision on the stimulus bill that the whole country was waiting for to deal with current events. While both sides rest from pointing fingers at each other, we on the local government front and people at home are trying to manage through very difficult times. We are making the hard decisions and trying our best to manage every challenge that may come, and to avoid some of the challenges that may come. How big might our challenges be? We've worked together to prepare for a good range of possibilities, but even today, we don't know what our ultimate challenge will be. At this point, we can only hope we have covered sufficiently. Thank you, Mr. President.
Scott, did anyone else put their hand up to speak on the open forum?
Not that I can see.
Nobody? Okay. Next item. I would entertain a motion that we recess into executive session under the following: A, discussion by council vote or other action on Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation; 1, potential litigation and/or litigation, presentation to town council of claim or demand against town of North Smithfield by Brian A. Thomas pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 45-5-5; and B, discussion by council vote or other action on Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A5, any discussion or consideration related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes, of the disposition of publicly held property where an advance public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public; 1, discussion by council vote or other action on Sousa Family Limited partnership request, purchase 950 Old Smithfield Road, Platte 13, Lot 25, including but not limited to; A, proposed purchase and sales agreement between Sousa Family Limited Partnership, Maureen S. Pilkington, in the town of North Smithfield; B, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Open Space Grant 20 supplemental project guidelines and requirements; C, conservation easement between Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management in the town of North Smithfield; D, resolution of the town council authorizing the town administrator to execute any and all documents required by Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management to provide an open space grant funding to the town of North Smithfield; and E, authorization of any and all other action required to complete the purchase of 950 Old Smithfield Road, Platte 13, Lot 25. There are motion to move recess into executive session.
I'll make that motion to move into executive session on Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5, subsection 82.
And A5?
Oh, and A5, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bonamoli. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes.
Okay, give me a second to put everybody back in the...
Put everybody back in the waiting room. Just keep Tom...
Yeah, I know.
Tom, we gotta take care of one thing first, and then we'll have you come in on the second part.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Sorry, give me a second. Sorry, I have to do it one at a time.
Yep, it's okay.
Okay, and I have to pause the... Okay, we're all set, ready to move on?
Everybody's back?
Yep.
Town council is back in session at 8:02. Let the record show that there was one vote taken in executive session, and is there a motion to seal the minutes?
A move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. At this time, I'm gonna move up. Item H, under New Business, discussion by council vote or other action on Sousa Family Limited partnership request, purchase 950 Old Smithfield Road, Platte 13, Lot 25, including but not limited to, discussion by council vote or other action on Sousa Family Limited partnership request, purchase 950 Old Smithfield Road, Platte 13, Lot 25, including but not limited to, proposed purchase and sales agreement between Sousa Family Limited Partnership, Maureen S. Pilkington, in the town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Open Space Grants 2020 supplemental project guidelines and requirements, conservation easement between Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management in the town of North Smithfield, resolution of the town council authorizing the town administrator to execute any and all documents required by Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management to provide an open space grant funding to the town of North Smithfield, and authorization of any and all other action required to complete the purchase of 950 Old Smithfield Road, Platte 13, Lot 25. Item A, is there a motion to approve the purchase, the proposed purchase and sales agreement between the Sousa Family Limited Partnership, Maureen S. Pilkington, in the town of North Smithfield?
Mr. President?
Zelinski.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to execute a purchase and sales agreement with the Sousa Family Limited Partnership, Maureen S. Pilkington, not to exceed $429,000 and the receipt of $214,500 Department Environmental Grant. Also, to authorize the town administrator to sign a finalized agreement that meets the concerns of the town solicitor and the town planner as to form. That's a motion.
You have a motion by Mrs. Zelinski, and second by Mrs. Bonamoli. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Next is Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Open Space Grants 2020 supplemental project guidelines and requirements. Tom given us this, this document, and it explains the 10 things that are necessary in order to get the grant funding from DEM and what's required on this. I know some of this stuff we have, we already have in place, correct?
Yeah, some of the stuff we have, the remaining items that we need to put in place, they're not daunting things, just some administrative things, getting a title done, the environmental transaction screen should be done, we gotta prepare the conservation easement. We already have a survey plan done, so we're in pretty good shape.
Anybody have any questions, comments on this piece?
You know, before we get a little too far into all this, I would just like to publicly thank the town planner, Tom Pratt, for an exceptional job of putting together the application, which the town has received, the $214,500. Thanks, Tom. I know the residents appreciate it as well. Thank you very much.
The next item is conservation easement. We do have a... Mr. Igliosi?
Mr. President, are you going to take a vote to say those items will be delivered? If whatever items that need to be done on that list of requirements?
I didn't know we needed to vote on their requirements, and then we...
Well, I think some of this stuff might cost the town money, and so any item on this list that DEM requires, I think we need to have your authority to get it done.
Okay, so then let's...
Unless Tom knows for sure that none of it's gonna cost money, but I don't know not to be sure.
No, it's gonna cost money, but not big dollars. The environmental transaction screen is $850. A title search is not big money. And all of these items are reimbursed above and beyond the grant amount that DEM has already awarded. So it's, we're not talking big money at all.
We do need authorization.
Yeah, I'll make a motion back, Mr. President.
Isn't that, isn't that one of the items that's on the agenda? Item, item E?
Yeah, yeah.
Take that action.
Okay. Well, I put that in as a catch-all, but that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
I thought it was there for things like this that would come up that we needed to get done, that we wouldn't know right off the bat what they were.
It works.
Okay. And next is the conservation easement. We do have a draft that was, I'm assuming that David, you drew this up, or with Tom's help?
I did it in conjunction with DEM, Mr. President. DEM had a form for other towns, and this is how I generated it.
And so this is one that we need to take a vote on, but it needs to be filled in, all the blanks need to be filled in, because we don't, we won't, we won't know the date of the easement until we own the property, correct?
That's correct. I think I would ask you to approve it and allow those remaining items to be inserted as soon as we have that information, because DEM has to go to the State Properties Committee in order to move to the next step, which is gonna be a 30-to-45 day process, and they won't even go there until they have a resolution from the town council.
Right, and that's, that's the next thing after the conservation easement. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of signatures necessary on this conservation easement. Is there a motion to approve the conservation easement, authorize the administrator or the town planner, or...
Well, I apologize, Mr. President. I thought you were on the resolution.
No, no, the conservation easement.
I apologize. I was on the wrong item.
But this still, this still needs to go through. I mean, it's...
It does. I would just ask the council to vote to approve a conservation easement in substantially the form that's presented here?
For the recommendation of the solicitors, is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Zelinski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ogier. Any discussion? It's pretty boilerplate anyways, isn't it, David?
It is. This is what, this is what DEM is paying for. DEM is giving you half the money in order to give, to have this conservation easement placed on that land, so they can be assured that that land is gonna remain that way. This is their conservation easement.
Okay.
So you don't, this is not negotiable with the DEM, unless Mr., unless the town administrator knows otherwise. That's not my experience.
No, you're right, Mr. Igliosi.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. You have a question?
I do. I just, I missed the last part of what Mr. Igliosi said. I have the approved conservation easement and substantially, I missed the last part.
Form is submitted.
It's the form submitted.
Is the form submitted?
In this form, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted, it's a lot of different things being said. I just wanna make sure I had it.
The motion was by Mrs. Zelinski, second by...
That I got. Mrs. Bonamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Next item is the resolution of the town in North Smithfield, David.
This is the item, Mr. President, that needs to go before the property commission in order for DEM to have, be authorized to issue funds. So this, this needs to be approved in order to go to the next step. And it's only really, I think, if my, if my recollection is correct, only two or three items that are not missing. Today's date to be inserted in the first paragraph.
Yeah.
We now know the purchase and sales agreement.
We do have that letter, we do have that letter from DEM.
And we have the letter from DEM. So I think we have everything that's required to fill this resolution. I certainly would defer to the planner, if I'm incorrect, but I think we have everything now.
That's correct.
So is there a motion to approve the resolution as submitted to the town, pending having those blanks filled in, and having the approval of it, being approved to form by the solicitor?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. O'Hara, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. Zulinski, Mr. Rozier. Um, and just as a reminder, if we do approve it, you need to show up at the Town Clerk's Office for signatures, this needs all of our signatures. Any other discussion? Hearing None, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. And the last, I'm going to look for a motion For, to give authorization to any and all other action required to complete the purchase of 950 Old Smithfield Road, Platte 13, Lot 25. Motion by Mrs. Barnamoli, second by Mr. Zulinski. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Lily, thank you, David. A lot of work got done last week to, uh, move a lot of this stuff forward. Now, let me see, where were we? North Smithfield Town Council Sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners, Discussion by Council, Vote or Other Action on Evicting License For JSC Management LLC Doing Business as Burger King at 66 Eddie Dowling Highway. There are motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Zulinski, seconded by Mrs. Barnamoli. It does appear that everything has been, uh, submitted and signed off on. Everybody. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Next item, Discussion by Council, Vote or Other Action on Payment of Bills. We're going to do this a little differently because it's, we're doing two fiscal years, so we're going to do it in two motions till we, We're going to do two sub-motions and then one final motion. If that's all right with everybody. So we have, we have the approval list For 17, 20, 20, And for General Fund in Sewer and Water for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020 Is for $44,994.52. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Barnamoli, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Hearing None, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. And for Electronic Payments Year 2019, 2020, $3,771.35. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zulinski, seconded by Mrs. Barnamoli. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. And from the General Fund in Sewer and Water from Fiscal Year 2020, 2021, a total of $495,456.96. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zulinski, seconded by Mrs. Barnamoli. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. And for Electronic Payments for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021, Library, $38,410.75. To the School Department, $1,725,126. To the Fire Department for September, $256,305.75. To the Interlocal Trust for Insurance, $300,596.88. And for Retirement Account, $10,199.34. Total Electronic Payments Of $2,330,678.72. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Barnamoli, seconded by Mr. Rozier. Any discussion? Hearing None, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. And then one last vote for Grand Total Payments of $2,874,901.55. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rozier, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Just as a reminder, another thing to show up at the Clerk's Office To sign Cover Sheet. Someday we'll get back to meeting in, in person, and we can do, take care of all this in one shot. Next discussion by Council, Vote or Other Action on Consent Agenda. All Items Listed in This Section Are Considered in One Motion. There Will Be No Separate Discussion of These Items Unless a Counselor So Requests, In Which Event the Item Will Be Removed From the Consent Agenda. A. Town Council Minutes of July 20th and August 3rd, 2020. Communications, Animal Control Monthly Report for July 2020. North Smithfield Police Department Monthly Report for July 2020. North Smithfield Municipal Court Monthly Report for July 2020. North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Service Monthly Report for July 2020. Resolution from the City of Newport Regarding the Newport Pell Bridge, the Mount Hope Bridge, the Secana River Bridge, And Jamestown-Varizano Bridge and Route 138 through Jamestown. Resolution from the Town of Portsmouth Recognizing and Honoring African-American History And in answer Of RITVA Revenue and Management Authority And Resolutions from the Town of Jamestown Requesting Support For the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority and Urging the State of Rhode Island To Allocate At Least 10% Of Its $1.5 Billion in Federal Cares Act Funds To Establish A Grant Program For Businesses Impacted By COVID. Is there a motion To Approve The Consent Agenda As Presented?
Mr. President, I, I have something I want to remove for discussion.
What would you like to remove, Mr. Zulinski?
Minutes of August 3rd.
Minutes of August 3rd. Anything else wanted removed? So the, we, is there a motion to approve the rest of the Consent Agenda then?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zulinski, seconded by Mr. Rozier. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Discussion by Council, Vote or Other Action on Specific Items Removed From Consent Agenda Above the Minutes of August 3rd, 2020? Mr. Zulinski?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. I, I think you can all recall the frustration that you had waiting for me as I attempted to access the Zoom meeting on the 3rd. So, uh, in the paragraph, opening paragraph, Mr. Zulinski arrived at 7:29. I would ask my colleagues to insert in there, Mr. Zulinski had technical difficulties Accessing, uh, Meeting, uh, electronic meeting, And arrived at Town Hall at 7:29 to participate. If you don't mind adding that in, because, uh, It just looks like I was late, and I really wasn't. I was trying to attend the online meeting, and I had no luck doing it. And again, I'd like to thank you all for waiting as long as you put for me to get there.
Is that a motion to amend them?
Yes, sir, that's my motion to amend it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Now, is there a motion to approve the Minutes of August 3rd, 2020 as amended?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zulinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Next item, Old Business, Discussion by Council, Vote or Other Action on, uh, Update on Municipal Building Review Task Force. From my name. Um, you do have a cover letter, signed by the Chair. He's recommending That the Council Approve Invoice Number 18017-27, Dated August 4th, 2020, From Secocean Associates For Services Rendered Through July 30th, 2020 In Amount of $3,680. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zulinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barnamoli, discussion? Hearing None, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Also, the Task Force is recommending that, based on the advice of Secocean Associates, that Pay Rec Number 8 in the Amount of $424,566.78 be approved. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Barnamoli, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second for discussion.
I like it, okay.
Is there any questions on Pay Rec Number 8? No questions? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Next is Discussion by Council, Vote or Other Action on Clarification on Directive to MBRTF Regarding Bushy School Police Station And Follow-Up From The 8-3 Meeting, Mr. Rozier.
Yeah, so I'll be quick, I just, you know, I was watching the MBRTF meeting last Tuesday, and it, I know that a few times it came up that it, It seemed we hadn't given enough direction in terms of renovation. Um, I know that was a kind of a topic, and I know, Uh, like I said, it came up a few times, so what I was really, um, You know, kind of hoping to see was that they would utilize the existing plans that have already been done, you know, I think it's been documented numerous times that There's been past plans, I think we even talked about it at the last meeting. Use those plans so we don't have to spend more money to get a new Renovation, uh, draw up in terms of new plans. Um, and apply a cost estimate to those to get their inflated costs, inflation costs. Um, So that's kind of really what I, I was looking at, um, to get some 2020 numbers on those plans. Um, you know, I think the new station, the, how that one is pretty self-explanatory within RFP. I trust you guys are going to, um, work through that. Um, but yeah, so that's really just kind of what I was Kind of hoping that would clarify, um, because like I said, I know it came up, and I, I agree, I watched back, and I realized maybe we weren't as clear as we, we could have been.
Our understanding, and I'm only speaking for myself, but based on the conversation that we did have on last Tuesday, Was that we're going to develop an RFP, RFQ, depending on, on what we choose, and which, which direction we go. There's two different ways to do this. You can hire an architect, And he hires a consultant, or you can hire a consultant and he goes over things with an architect. Similar to how school building is done, when you go through the school process and you want to do a school building, You, under their guidelines, you need to hire an architect, and then they also have to have an educational specialist component That weighs in on things. And so, We're going to be looking into doing an RFP, an RFQ, whichever one it is, And it's going to come back to the Council for approval before it goes out to bid. So you'll see what we're looking to ask for before it goes back out. I don't know if that, I don't know if that clar, if that clarifies it.
Yeah, I guess really, yeah, so I mean, I, I get that approach. Um, so I guess just using whatever we've already spent money on to, you know, look at first is kind of the basis for that. Maybe that's what you guys are going to do, like I said, I just-
All, go ahead.
No, it just sounded like it was just kind of, there was some confusion as to what the Council was hoping, what the, from the MBRTF side, as to what the Council was hoping to kind of gauge them on. Um, So that was just my observation, so I just wanted to put it on for follow-up.
Any, anybody that the Council hires to do this, They would be given all of those drawings and all of that data. Obviously, it would be part of, it would be part of how they look at things.
Yeah, well, and you know, part of it was, you know, because I think there is valuable information in there, you know, the Sally Port came up, you know, in your guys' meeting, And you know, it sounds like it'd already been included in one set of plans, so I think It's a good place to start, um, And just work off of that.
Hmm. Did you have anything to add to that, Chief? I know that you wanted to make a comment earlier. Chief Lafferty?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was on the phone with, uh, somebody. Uh, I didn't hear that last rendition, uh, over the, over my phone.
I was just wondering if you had any, any questions, comments in regards to going forward with the, um, The police station with what was discussed earlier tonight?
Yes, as far as, uh, the comments from Michael Clifford, or just in general what our, our consensus is, is moving forward with this project?
Both.
So, um, there was a meeting with Mihah when they, at Scudders Hall, that I attended with Chief Reynolds and retired Captain Glenn Lammerow. It was, the chief started off the meeting, uh, with his comments to state that His, his wish was to have a new station built in the back parking lot And have the front old station demolished, just like the state police. However, he said, and this was his, his thoughts were, If they were going to do anything as far as renovations or improvements to the police department, That you don't look a gift toss in the mouth. So whatever they could do, If that's all they could do, then we needed something. But his wishes were to have a new station, so that, that's, That was at that meeting at Scudders Hall with Mihah. And that's our wish now.
Okay. Any questions of the chief from the council?
I, I guess I do, I have a question to Chief Lafferty. Do you, do you still, The recommendations that were made in the short-term solution, you know, Do you still support the recommendations that were made on the original 2014 bond being floated and/or that have been consulted since then? As areas of need for improvement and within the current station?
Counselor, there's been so many changes with the scope of work, it's shrunk. It's, the money's been eaten up, there's, there's different areas of the station that need attention. No one's ever addressed the relocation of the communications center, the evidence room, the records room. Those things aren't even considered on the bids that, On just the blueprint and the bones of the building with The HVHC, the electric. It, it, it's, it's, it's very complicated. I sat in on the meetings, uh, at Primrose when, uh, Mr. Flaherty came out with The suggestion to do infrastructure improvement, which I, I commend, But there's been mistakes and Things all along the way, not to blame anybody, but it, it is what it is. I think when they got into the nitty-gritty of the building that it needed so much that it needed to be relooked, looked at again, that's, that's all. But I know from A personal view, sitting on the side of the chief, Chief Reynolds at the time, At that meeting at that time, he always told me, we, we, we should have a new building, and it should be on the premises, and they should demo this, and they should do it just like state police, Because it would save the town money on relocation and trailers and this and that, because I looked into all that as a captain. And however, if, if that's what we had to spend to make our life a little easier in the station with the improvements, then so be it. But, but, and, and, and I just wanted to set the record straight as far as that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Rozier?
No, I mean, I still, you know, I still think if we, you know, the renovation's still an option, I know, I think we at least need to get the cost to see what it looks like to compare it to a new station. You know, I know we have six hundred thousand still impending costs with Kendall Dean, it would be nice to see those numbers updated over time. You know, because that's factored into the one point four remaining, so you, you know, if those numbers come in last, you may have more of the original bond money. I know it's not gonna solve everything. It may, it may change the scenario of what we can do down the line, so I think it's just prudent to have all the numbers updated, so I think you guys answered what I put on.
The only thing, Mr. Ogier, you know, in all the council and anyone listening is, are those costs calculated with the relocation of our station and the business that we do on a seven twenty-four hour a day, seven days a week with records, evidence, like, I look, communication. We can't stop working, right? We need a, a, a second place wherever it is, in the back and trailers, renovating a building, cells, lockup to cover all the handicap issues and prisoner, you know, we're the custodians of, of people that we take in custody, so I don't know if all that cost was in that bond or in the money that you're talking about. That's, that's, that was, that's my biggest, the hidden cost of doing a renovation within the building. Now you have the asbestos, asbestos, the abatement, the ceiling off of buildings, the ceiling off of this, that and the other, where we're gonna move. That's the logistics, the cost of that, that, those logistics is, is pretty, I think, costly. And that, that's the only thing I would add to it, in any meeting I would be there, because I did it, I did all the logistics moving up to it and it was, it was always a side, a side note, right? I don't think it was taken in consideration as the asbestos as the renovation project, you know what I mean? And I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just adding, shedding light on there, there are some other costs involved in it and I don't, I haven't seen the full spectrum of every, I saw the engineering plans and the blueprints, yeah. It's an as-built, this is the design, this is what they're gonna do, and you know that's gonna be ten, fifteen percent more because of things they run into, right? So that's another cost that I don't think people have taken into consideration, that's all I'm saying as far as the renovation.
And that, and that's why I think we need to go back to those original plans as well to find out what exactly what was in there. You know, find out if it was, what does the cost look like current day? Because I agree with you, if they weren't included in there, you know, it's obviously, you know, not a full story as well, so that's why I said go back to the original ones, work off of those and then update with 2020 numbers and you can kind of get a sense as to what a renovation cost would look like.
Right, and I, and I don't think that's a bad idea, but the total renovation cost has, you know, I'll sit in on every meeting, I did it as a captain and but I don't think those were ever written down and that, those are estimates where I kind of brought to the table like this, hey chief, if we move the communication systems to town hall, the cells, this, that and the other thing, where are we gonna park all the cruisers, you know? It, it, there's a lot to think about, and I, I, I don't think that was really taken under consideration as far as the total cost of the project, that's all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
More to come on that.
Oh, yeah.
New business. Discussion by council vote or other action on presentment to Town Council of Claim of Demand against Town of North Smithfield by Brian A. Thomas pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-five dash fifteen dash five. Mr. Igliozzi.
Mr. President, at this time, that matter can be continued until further information is provided and available.
No action necessary at this time?
No, the law requires that the council get this notice and we've received it and I've, we've talked about it.
Okay. Item discussion by council vote or action on second reading of the wage and salary ordinance, Mr. Jesus.
This is just the second reading of the wage ordinance that was read last town council meeting and it's what's been in the budget, adopt, the adopted budget. The only difference is, is council ninety-four, we're still going through negotiations for the contract, so that's based on the last contract.
Further. Finance Director, is there a motion to approve for second reading?
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bonmioli. Solicitor, question for the solicitor. Do we have to read this whole two-page document, three-page document?
You do not, you do not, it's, it's before you, if it stands, you know, it represents what it's, it is listed.
Okay. And just as a reminder, something else we need to go and see the town clerk for signature for. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item. Discussion by council vote or other action on easement from National Grid in support of the underground utilities at Edward Avenue. Mr. Kravitz.
Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward agreement, it's with, with the planning board having approved the minus subdivision over there, which is the extension of Edward Avenue. The developer had actually come back and asked if he could run above-ground utilities and the planning board had requested, you know, no, do, do underground utilities and that's what they're doing with the regulations called for, so if you recall, the town acquired the property, put the sewer in. So now the contractor's on site digging the trenches for these utilities and this is just National Grid's easement that they need you to grant to them because it's your property.
Just a move a pole, correct?
Uh, well, no, they're gonna put the conduit, you know, underground all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And it covers manholes, it's, I think, the small above-ground utilities and spots too.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I might, this is typical of what we do for any action that grid either installs or modifies equipment that they put on town property.
Is there a motion to approve the grant of easement to an electric company for Edward Avenue and to authorize the administrator to sign it? Well, motion by Mrs. Zelinski, second by Mrs. Bonmioli. Any other discussion? Very none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on easement agreement for Dowling Village Apartments, Mr. Kravitz.
This, this project was in the works for several years now, when the planning board had approved prior to my hire, the apartments at Dowling Village, the eighty-eight unit apartment building, which people have probably noticed if you go to all these or whatever over there, it's right in that vicinity. There was supposed to be a trail that has public access to the east of Bouffane. Back in April fifth, I think it was, of twenty nineteen, we met out there as myself, I think Paul Zelinski was with us, and several members of the Land Trust and Conservation Commission all went out, we met with the developer and they had agreed that they would prepare this and they have done so. And so what you have is this easement agreement, now I took the Land Trust members out there again, once the path was cleared for us to walk it more safely and they agreed to its location. And so I'll have to get the signatures of the Land Trust as well, they're on here. But everything is, is good with this, we ran it by Solicitor Igliozzi and we had to iron out some details in the easement drawing to make sure we get the meets bounce description and everything's proper. The last thing you want to do is put an easement down and then go to let the public walk on it and then have someone on the property say they can't, but we're all good with that, and the owner of the project actually dedicated four parking spaces in their overflow lot too, so that's on the easement as well, so everything looks good with this, if you would endorse it, that would be good.
For the recommendation of the town planner, is there a motion to approve the easement agreement between the town of North Smithfield, the North Smithfield Land Trust, and Dowling Village Apartments LLC?
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski?
Second.
This is Bonmioli and Mrs. O'Hara. And we also have to, and we'll do this. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. I'd also entertain a motion to authorize the administrator to sign it. I would ask that he be the last person to sign this, this agreement. Let, get, get Uchi to sign it and get the Land Trust to sign it before we sign off on it. My only request on it, but is there a mo, I'll make the motion that we authorize the administrator to sign it after those two have signed.
Second.
Second. By Mrs. O'Hara. The discussion. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on school bonds, Gilbane Company, Gilbane Building Company invoice number three, number, excuse me, J zero eight two four eight point zero one zero dash fourteen in the amount of thirty-seven thousand six hundred eleven dollars and forty-six cents has been signed off by the superintendent, by our O P M, by the school committee chair and by the facilities director. Motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Ogier, second by Mrs. Zelinski. Any discussion? Very none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on request to abandon a portion of Brighton Street. Referral to Planning Board for Recommendation.
Motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski to forward the request to abandon Brighton Street to the Planning Board. There a second?
Second.
Second.
By Mrs. Bonmioli. Tom, this seems to be keep coming up now, this is third or fourth one that we do now in, in a short period of time. And I know that there, there are a lot of these little paper streets, I guess people call them. Technically, public right-of-way is though, correct?
Correct.
They're just not developed, or, or I should say improved. And so there's quite a few of these in town and I'm wondering if more people are getting, getting to that point saying, well, we're using the land, we might as well officially take ownership of it.
You know, it's, it's hard to say, I mean, there's despite all the undeveloped land in town with the regulations and the process by which to go through the developed land, there are these little pockets in town where the old flats were recorded a hundred years ago, you know?
I live in one of those.
Yeah, yeah, you do, and this is no different, developers trying to put some land together to try to make a little more area for a home. And if this paper street serves no purpose and after we talk with one, we always want to confirm with the neighboring town, like in this case, you know, make sure there's no foreseeable need in the future. You know, then I guess why not, but yeah, there's a few of them that have happened, I think it's just coincidence though, to be honest.
Okay, well, the reason, the reason I ask is be, like I said, my neighborhood, there were three of those streets like that, paper streets. And there's something going on behind us and so my neighbors come to me and they, and they're wondering, hey, what about this street, the paper street and who owns it and I said, well, the town technically owns it, but I said, you can, it's not improved and whatnot, and they said, if you want to, you can go through a process to get it abandoned, but I says, you need to go through that, I'm not, I don't want to but those, those streets, but it's, it's an issue with some of these people, they keep wondering, well, who owns the street? And, and, you know, what can we do about it? Is the town responsible for taking care of, like if a tree falls from, from the, the paper street on their property, is the town responsible for it? I get, I get a whole myriad of questions on this lately.
No, you're right, and it's this, the process and the advertising that has to be paid for by the applicant. And then it's up to the council if they want to abandon their interest in that property and then it gets split down the center line to each abutting owner.
Yeah, that's what I've explained to them, I said, you don't get it all, even if you do it, but I said, there's a cost to doing it and a process.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so it's the neighbors looking to do this or it's the developer?
No, this is the developer.
This is the developer in this case.
Okay, so.
He's looking to do this, Tom, to create buildable lots, correct?
Trying to get them more buildable than they would otherwise be, they still may be legal.
Because he has restrictions with the setbacks if that continues.
Right.
When he would end up, just like the, the case that we had on Stony, Stony Drive where the guy builds his building on the public right-of-way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in that case, the mistake was made already when you put the house up.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
No.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ogier?
Um, yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
No.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes, this was only referring it to the planning board. We weren't making a decision at this time, we were referencing it, but now it's not even going to the planning board, that's okay. Next item. Discussion by council vote or other action on fiscal year 2019 pre-disaster mitigation program award notice, Mr. Kravitz.
This is a, a grant that we got through FEMA and it's to address the Cherry Brook analysis that we've been doing to try to come up with a way to mitigate the chronic flooding that happens there. And the reason I, I gave you a contract with this, the same one that we went with previously with E A, because there was a second phase to that contract and I wanted you to see that phase two work description, because that's essentially what this would pay for. And what that is for the public is basically, we want to take the next step and look at Cherry Brook and analyze the alternatives, the, what could be the potential fixes for that neighborhood over there and wood loan and whatnot. And so there'll be a little more engineering analysis, evaluating the cost of the different alternatives. And then it's not a big contract, it's what, fourteen thousand, so I've asked the consultant to take another look at that phase two and now that they know that they've already done phase one of it, say, give me something that's specific now, now that we have the grant funds, and so I'll be bringing that new contract back to you, but it's gonna look a lot like what the phase two work was in the first contract. And then after that, I should say, if we get through this, this piece, they, they, they pick an alternative and they'll do this with the residents, there's gonna be a public meeting where you can show everything to everybody. And let's, let's say we agree on the alternative, what the fix is. Then we go to some more design and permitting, environmental permitting perhaps, and then we go out to the big grant to try to fund the fix, which could be several hundred thousand dollars, but it will be, it will be several hundred thousand dollars, but there, there's Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank money out there and I want to go after that in the next year and try to fund, you know, most of this work, so.
Mr. President?
There, go ahead.
I certainly want to encourage the, the council to support this effort by the planner. Mr. Kravitz done a great job to get us this far. This is one of those problems that I think the, the community is known as existed for decades. And it just isn't gonna go away. No matter how much we wish and hope and pray, it's not gonna go away. So, you know, we're, we don't have the ultimate amount of money that, that we would like to be able to just push forward and get something done here. But this will give us, it's another step in the right direction to establish a definite plan of work that we can request support for through additional grants and so I hope that, you know, you'll be, you'll warmly receive this when it comes back to you in a final form.
You're recommending approval of this?
Absolutely.
Well, heard from the town planner and from the administrator, is there a motion to? What do we do, Tom, do we?
Really nothing to motion yet.
Do we accept the grant, is that what the motion is to do?
I'm putting this on, well, you could do that, but I'm putting this on your radar to say, I'm gonna come back to you with an actual contract for the phase two work now, hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so this, this grant, this is just notice of the grant, back with a contract to E A or who's ever doing this work. And then we'll authorize the administrator to sign that contract.
Well, but, Mr. President, no, we do need, I do need authorization to sign the grant, as you can see, we have to agree to accept this. That is why the document's before you.
Okay.
Piece that, that comes to you in the form of a contract for the work, but I, I need authorization to sign this back to Rema.
Okay, is there a motion then to authorize the administrator to sign off on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. O'Hara, second by Mrs. Zelinski. Any other, thank you for clarifying that. Any other question? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Please me to the last item, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Ogier, second by Mrs. O'Hara. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonmioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Good night all.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, for taking the time tonight.
Thanks, Tom, Prebeton.